I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts.
Thank you very much. Ladies and gentlemen, if anyone had a chance to read the minutes from the prior meeting. Any changes, discussions? Hearing that, I'll look for motion to approve the minutes.
How about we print the minutes?
Sally? And second, by Ms. Tracy. All members, aye? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you all. Policy number three, policy oh five, number two, recognition just just. Do you have copy?
Yes, copy is the one.
Lee? Is that one the name you were giving?
Yes, so that's.
Facility.
Facility is right. That's it, can you pass the round? But you were, you were sent already the copies, the authorization report. Copy of the point four committee that has to do with the donor recognition naming, giving, many, was a committee for the districts, district personnel, and two board members. Two board members were spared in this case. And we met from, we met about three or four times from beginning of January until, until February, March. And during that time, we looked at possibilities of some policy making that when, if we should ever be encountered by someone wishing to make your wish.
Does everybody have a copy of that policy?
There are actually two that we're looking at. We're looking at a manuscript that's attached in the one documents. And then we're looking at one that has been existing, one that has to do specifically with facility naming. Because as the committee looked at the, the new one that, that's attached in the board documents, questions came up that had to do with how does that compare, or how does that relate to the one that's existing that has to do with naming of facilities, of buildings, you will. So the committee did research, apparently in Kentucky, there are a lot of, not a lot of policies. K S B A actually did not come up with a lot of recommendations for us. So we had to look even outside of our bounds, outside of Kentucky. We did find some other school districts and other parts of the nation that we looked at, and we fashioned a policy with some terminology that would, that was actually from the Seattle Public School District. And then we sent that to K S B A representative Katrina Kimmon, and then she fashioned, and she wrote the policy for us. This is her recommendations draft. And it has to do with situations, for example, if individuals provide to donate money or, or in large sum, some of that. How would we accept it, and what terms would we accept it? What if it do, we looked at possibilities such as what if the donor may have criteria for the donation, and what if the donor had a specific request in ways that the donation might be used. So that's what the attached brand new board policy draft is all about. And then the second one is a little policy. That one's titled facilities construction and naming. And you can see there that it does have some specifics, and we've used those guidelines before. Most recently, that I can read and hook with me in the building that we're currently sitting in, in Dona Marie Johnson's school. So do you have any questions about the new policy, the donor recognition policy?
Joe, was it Katrina's understanding when she wrote this, that we would still keep our facilities in construction? They get policy in place, and this would be in addition to?
Yes.
Because what was, the concern that I say to you was, if we didn't have a name of a sports facility, or name of a building, it's still needed for approval, which is what this facility, this policy talks about.
Absolutely, yes.
So that would be.
Would be in addition to.
I just have a question. Did the committee look at the dollar amount? Did you talk about the necessity to include books and papers on that?
We did, we did have discussion about dollar, dollar amounts, that we talked about over a certain amount, such as over one thousand, or over five thousand. Yes, larger sums. We did not, we were going to leave, our intention was to leave small amounts to the discretion of the schools, particularly if it went to the, if it went to the school level, as opposed to if it went to the district level. Yes.
That's one of the things that I asked, because it's not here. We discussed it when we were in our committee, that we did have the decision to put it in there. My, my recommendation would be anything, because we talked about convening a committee that would include two board members and five other district personnel, so that's seven people. I think there needs to be a dollar amount, minimum amount, that, below that, the side base council member, principal could decide if we're talking a small recognition. If we're talking over a huge dollar amount, or a larger recognition, then it needs to go with that committee. I can't see doing it every time we got a hundred dollar donation, and somebody wants something, after convening seven people, partying seven people together.
I sent her.
That's my own made question.
We sent her, we sent her all of our notes, like our aside notes, and then when we sent her the Seattle Public District, their whole set, actually Julie Wisher changed those into Anderson County. They were read as if they were Anderson County. And she, Ms. Kimmon, this is what she sent back in response to additional, a few additional notes, and the ones that we adopted, or we took ideas from.
Ideas, we, we changed this.
Just had a question about number four. Down here where you start spelling out illegal drugs, alcohol, meth, and heroin. There are potentially more categories that could be morally questionable than just those four. So it might be to our advantage to take those specifically, have a replacement of them, just like what we need, what, what this may, or whatever, the names may be morally questionable. And just some wording that you could put in here and generalize it, so that some company that we might be morally questionable comes to us as a same run on that list, like we're on both of the implications.
Yes, or something that's kind of like open into, as you can, where, and all other, and all other.
I'm not sure about the wording right now, off the top of my head, but I mean, I'm sure we could come up with something if we just, sorry.
Included in all of it.
Yeah.
I guess those are categories that are specifically identified in the law, that you don't have to argue towards others. Anything else?
So we could just change that part. Well, remember what you, dollar amounts, I mean, we had a talk about dollar amounts. What do you want the authority to do? Do you, would you think that the side base council should be able to do, and what not, that you favor? Should come in with board?
You could figure probably five thousand dollars per person?
I would agree with that.
So if they offer five thousand, would they come to board the board? If they know that, could it be approved by side base council? If they need, if they requested, would it be made that goes to the rest of the community?
Is there a starting dollar of, of ten dollars?
You mean like a minimum donation to, to get a recognition? That's a good question.
Do we have, we have new work to talk about?
We, I don't recall that we talked about a name or a recognition. Is that my memory?
It is likely to be a small project, side of the world. Could be a recognition in mind.
I'm wondering what the purpose of the minimum would be. Thinking as a principal, or as a side base council member, there might be times where you would want to apply for recognition that costs minimal amount of money, but was very important to the history of that school. Or instead, you know, piece of the garden, or whatever. So I don't even know.
Be a dollar cash, but in the making, there might be something using.
Correct. I'd be a little wary of putting any kind of figures in there, unless, I'm just saying that. Wonder if there may be some thinking, I'm not aware of.
I mean, that might be why, what you're saying, I was thinking if you easily have twenty people get ten dollars and ask the classroom to be named that, and the other classrooms are. I was in elementary school. I guess I thought it would be a larger donation to have something named, like, if I have my honor, or a memory of somebody.
It would still just have.
Like you, like a picture of.
That would still be the discretion of the side base council, or is there going to be use of, on the same strategy, or if they're not?
But it should be, I think, consistent school to school. It should maybe, yes, be the one guidance that the schools would do that similar.
We had even discussed in the committee that possibly make book in the library for something, but, but we, we thought if we really wanted to name a classroom or just a piece of building. The, all my, our thinking was, you probably want to take it up a little bit to get that out working. You want to probably increase, and that's why I would probably, I, I, that's what I think.
And then, no, but you.
You wouldn't recognize that somebody could give anything, but if you were to go to their stand, and put something outside classroom, or a piece of the building, then it would be a standard. So I think that's where, but I see what you're saying. It could be, it doesn't have to string five dollars, it could be incoming donations. You could do that, do that property.
I wasn't thinking about classrooms, and I see your point. That would be very inconsistent. I guess I was looking at it from the other point in my past experience as a principal, deceased staff member, and a garden was dedicated to that person, and there was a statuary there, and it was named after her. No one donated that, we all just dish in and, and do that to honor that person, so I'm wondering if that would put a limit on what a side base council would do, which I don't think we would want to do that.
And that's what, I think that there might even need to be just a little clarification as to intent. This is just donations from outside, meaning of donations, I think that's a different category than if you have a teacher, or something, you know, that there is a certain amount of discretion, because, I mean, like, actually, I was going to say, two thoughts. You know, there are things that come up as a school, when you decide to do something, you know, if you want to create something that's different, that's not a donation, that that might be a name, something that you do as an activity. I think that would be different than, than, yes, donations. And I think that keeping this policy, instead of into the language that says, donating donors should be recognized, donating donors may be recognized, and this is more of a, make sure that the wording is just more of a guidance, not, it's not so that it sounds like a mandate, like it's required. Somebody could read it as, they should, you know, if you donate, you should be recognized. And, and it's not that every donation there, receive recognition, or apply something, or calling someone in wall space. And, you know, something to that, if you just get an included clause, that that, that this policy is intended to provide guidance in the donation for corporate or community sponsors. And maybe you have up here, since that does not respect that building level activities that are, that maybe for kind of.
I was wondering what you were describing, like somebody that, to re-inscribe it, that stop that business moving outside of giving, you know, that would be sort of.
The facility piece about, like a classroom, or a gym, or someplace, there's a specific piece of this facility being named after a person, or a recognition of, I don't think that would be covered in the existing facilities construction naming policy. Whereas if there's a strong interest in that paragraph, then that would come to board. It doesn't have a dollar amount, it's just if we wanted to name, rename our preschool gymnasium, or a golf gym, that would be covered board. So it looks like according to that policy, if we wanted to name a classroom, or a library, or any other media center, that should also.
So yeah, that might, case while you're thinking on here, of looking at a particular classroom, or a particular purpose, and we need to list that as a reference or related policy. Just another thought that I had, in number one, what I read when I was in the, under there, is that way of reading these donations, the district, is this recognition shall be determined within. But I think that adding something in there that says, would follow approval by the board, there's just that little piece of it that seems to be, if you're going to do something that's going to be done for our community, that you just start, that's an extra layer.
And this is a safeguard, just a flagging.
If we talked about that, it just wasn't.
Right.
That's my figure.
Jen, is it you who have the, speaking, fix me?
I think so. Let me, let me go with this. So we want a figure amount in here, so that this is in regard to donations that are five thousand dollars or more, or we just want those that are over five thousand, so if we start at five thousand one. What do you want that stated? Five thousand or above, five thousand or more, okay? And in number one, we want to add some language to the final approval by the board. Correct. And on number three, we want to change the word should to may be done. However, does that change the intent of that?
Oh, it's.
It was number two.
It's number two.
Okay.
The should to the right.
And somehow, how are we tying into facility? Those two policies need to tie together, something.
I think that down under the section of related policies, look, we would include.
The way that.
Yes. And on number, this is number four, where we want to add the language and include, and included, but not permitted to. And that's the list. Items that we would not permit.
Please, it will be in.
All right, anything else?
If that was still all of the, the recognition. So I think that's how we do it, so that's that word.
Did I hear you say that this is specifically for a public donor recognition? So do we, is that something that needs to have here to set apart an internal school committing?
I'm listening on. If you're talking about, like, naming a classroom, it's almost like you might add, or change the language in the facility thing. That's the thought of it, you know, in that last paragraph, where if there's strong interest within community, which will consider participation, but you could add a sentence that makes it express, it's the thought. And I don't know that there's ever, I'm not aware of any, of any times that there's been requests on a school name in a classroom, or a teacher.
Could happen.
But it could happen. So just maybe adding a sentence that said, you know, if there's interest within, you know, in honor of a, something that is just. Uh, maybe a scenario that you can think of that did require, that says strongly, just within the name, that they have something added, since that. Or, or a student, or a student, or a group. That identified it to be more appropriate, maybe, if you're talking about things that aren't donations.
The committee was, the committee was pretty, we did discuss, what if someone approached, anyone approached the school to name a classroom after a student, a former student, or an unit, an adult? And our, our conversation was pretty much, we hesitated a very deal, when we had envisioned that happening.
And then, I think it's not that we haven't addressed, as I said, that there is, you know, there's a certain, like, there's a certain remains, twenty sixteen. But then when Sally brought up memorial. Where does that fit into all of it?
It, what you're looking at, I think, and then I think I followed you, that last paragraph under the facility naming guidelines, in the, the one I just read. Are you wanting to add, if there is a strong interest within the school, district, or community?
Perhaps. I mean, maybe that would be, just adding something there, but you're just talking about doing like a memorial garden. That's not really a donation, so then it's not really donor recognition.
It's just, it's just.
Right.
Or piece of facility name on this room, so a donation.
So you want, you want that set petition to be presented to superintendent?
And just go to the board? You just change that first part of the sentence, that if there's a strong interest within the, the school or the org community? School or org, would you be, just add, that'd be okay? Because inside the school, would we, high school, would we introduce something for somebody, right? All they have to do is bring this superintendent.
And, and to reason, I think distinction is important, is because, we're talking about petition. We're talking about a community petition, and you're looking for a bar, you know, for a number of people. But it is, you know, and that, there's not as many equal in that school community, that might be something that's really important here. So you just want that different level of review, of distinction.
Perhaps, I think I got it. I, any other suggestions, or, or comments, or ideas?
I can start you out, thanks.
Attached to your board packet was a, a G one. Oh, sorry. Attached in your board packet was a G one. This is something that you'll see, you know, on the May sixteenth agenda. Just trying to give you a little heads up of what's going to be coming up Monday. This is the LED lighting project that our maintenance department has been working on. It's the kind of the starting of the piece, if you remember, we gave you a maintenance kind of schedule. It will cover a high school, north middle school, south middle school gym lighting at this point. These are, we consulted with Joni, and we consulted with Dan, and Katie. On the second page, you had the amount, we was estimating around eighty-nine thousand, which includes an architect slash engineer being two thousand, and then you're still required to be contingency in there. Not that the planning is about a G one, it's a requirement. And so on Monday, we'll just ask for approval for these ones. We've moved that project forward. Are there any questions that you have right now about the G one? That is not a project that would be wanted, it is something that we would use with the cash money, to see capital outlay, and transfer to general, and pay that amount directly out of the board. I think it's a great challenge. Assistant Administrator, what was that on board agenda for May sixteenth? Thank you.
I just made copies, just in case. I wanted to go ahead and take care of that, so.
We did electronic play.
Apologize. This time I should shut up.
Now, like, hey, go ahead.
I have a question about that. The money that's in capital outlay that we're going to be using to do this project, is that money that has already come from our pickle tax, or is that money that existed in the account before?
It's all in, it could be.
It's all together.
Yeah, we have money sitting there, and there's money coming in.
The reason I ask that question, which you might just hear, the reason I ask that question is because when we were talking about the pickle tax, we did, once the community would show you where we're using that money, through the signs, we had pictures on our internet, and we had a quote hanging up that says, your tax dollars is worth. But you first, if you, this must change, and these are big changes that are public from the seeds in these gymnasiums. I think that would be a good, a good point.
Because maybe that makes the basis nice.
If that is part of the money, if it's not, it's money that was thrown before, but if it's part of it, then we need to say, we're using your tax dollars, and it's still usable, good things, and we're using it right away, because we told them that we, at this pass, we're using, so we have this, are we going to show them?
All right, thank you, all right. Moving on to superintendent evaluation timeline, Ms. Superintendent.
Okay, put it in your board packet, very simple, evaluation timeline, it's very similar to last year. The only difference was, I heard, I think I remember last year you all saying, hey, give us a little bit more time to be able to look at the rubric from your presentation until you have to turn it in to Lisa. Actually, I looked up, I think there was either six or seven days, five, twelve in there, and it falls kind of naturally. If May thirty-first happens to work, where they have some presentation, so maybe you all from that day forward can take the rubric, all the information, it's Lisa, it's either a team, she compiled it, and then the chief will be reporting what you do. That first review, well, it is the thirty-first.
Right, yeah, it's usually, I thought it was lunch, or do the lunch meeting.
Let's check, let's check our calendar, see.
May thirty-first, make a session.
Make a session.
Is there any possibility we can move that to Monday?
Monday, June. I mean, I can, I can be flexible, this is just a proposal.
So whatever works for you.
Uh, we can do it here, but it's usually a small session, you gotta get lost in the rooms, open lunch, and then our conference room there for the board office. Does the thirty-first review do? So let's try and, is it, is it the lunchtime that doesn't?
The whole day.
Okay.
Likely, yeah.
Okay. June first? Is that, uh, set thirty?
It's just thirty, I can't do thirty. Project, okay, so.
First, six. About Monday at six.
Six, they're working meetings for them. Or instead of doing the lunch session, which we just did it an hour before, or two hours, or an hour and a half before, four o'clock, sorry, four o'clock.
Set coming twice.
Set coming twice every day. Every, 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 so June, June sixth at four o'clock, and we'll just. We can do that, if we can, that means we'll do it here.
Yes, yes.
Do it here, when we, when we're working session.
Six at four o'clock. I'll still try and keep my deadline to get all the electronic information there by the thirty-first, or that way you all would have a bit of time to still look at.
So there's all that, that's, that would be great.
June sixth at four o'clock.
Okay, so if we get it.
In our work session.
We have, I have some information on the sixth, that would push it, um, to get your ratings back. You still, you're always sort of on stage, we just don't try to give the information to you by thirty-first, you still would push that. Then two weeks back, if you want to read the twelve, is the deadline.
I'm okay with less time, and the reason is, last year, it was a whole new process for all of us. We've never seen the rubric before, and it's a big, it's a, it's now, so.
And if she gets it to us on the thirty-first, you know, lunch will be in the middle. It's, it was, I had the information, so we can still leave the twelve as a deadline. Just have it to me. And that gives me, I'll keep this up. We're presenting the information. June the twentieth is a, a regular rating for one. When we sat down and discussed it, last year, Mr. Thompson, we went through the ratings, which piece of that was that? When we sat down, table, over the whole room.
You, you guys scheduled the time to do that. Because on the twentieth, on the twentieth of the regular, then we scheduled it, an executive session before you all shared the results with me, and then went into a power session. So you all have, they had sent the information to you.
And like you, they compiled it, yes.
And somehow you gave them the information, I was sitting with them before, you all had sent it.
Yeah, I just, I never sit and sharing that, I said, executive session, where it was just us, before we put it out to the public. And then, now legally, we can do that, legally, the executive session go over. So did we want to do that that day, between the, or, or do you all do it at different times? Between, okay. Maybe it was the twenty. Okay, so, yeah. We're here for me, this at six, we're doing it.
We have a second.
I think that's happening.
It's, it's need to be more than that.
No, was it, was it?
It was.
It takes a lot to go through. Only thing to go through all. Yeah, we have some situations. So if they're ready, it's just on their second year new, we have, we have patches, yeah. But same day, just to check something about this procedure every year or something. All right, so we're good back. Okay, moving on to, uh, whatever topics of the evening, budget, Mr. Superintendent.
Attached to the, so, 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 we just attached the new update for today. Okay, so here is our proposal for the CTE. We looked at the staff, our staff uniform, and, um, and worked through each school. We know that our enrollment has adjusted a little bit, so we adjusted, um, general staff accordingly. And so there's the savings amount in the right-hand column. We look at the CTE program, we spend a considerable amount of money over what we receive by grants and state funds because we're a locally owned, um, CTE unit. And so we've restructured that program a little bit with the help of Mr. Tompkins, and found some savings, um, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in savings there. We were able to somewhat collapse our program, but we also, then, Mr. Tompkins came back and did a little negotiating with us because we have students that have already started their pathway, and no way we want to hinder any of our students that are in the middle of a pathway. But we did find, um, savings there, special education department, this gap we worked diligently. Um, she was able to reduce, um, nine teachers to ten program assistants, to help us align more with the casas in special education at this point. Preschool program, we looked at, and we were able to reduce program assistance, retired only one year, and a community liaison person. Those savings of ninety-four thousand. Preschool at this point is very linked, there's, um, there is teachers, there's instructional assistant, we have cafeteria people, administration, clerical help. And as I said, they're, they're linked, very linked. Um, central academy, we looked at restructuring, providing more services through the e-learning type program, through computer-based learning. Performance-based, we're going to move from the high school back to central academy. We eliminated a, um, assistant principal position, we eliminated a guidance position. We non-renewed a few teachers that were non-tenure, um, just kind of reshuffled folks around. Still feel good that we can provide the service, um, that alternative kids need. We also were placing a teacher at Southville School and a teacher at Northville School to help because the number of spots, slots available for students will be reduced. And so in the transition years, we want to be able to provide at least some support for more of the staff. It still will be challenging, um, to transition this way, I would say for many, but that will be a, a cup of tea to do. But we feel it's doable, better show leadership in our schools that will work to try to make that happen. Um, ELL, we have a certified teacher that will be retiring in the fall. And Nancy Gibson has looked at that caseload, our ELL students, and they're likely to shuffle around and change teacher schedules and still be able to accommodate. Gifted program, as you know, the committee put together a proposal, and the proposal said we can do a program with three teachers. This is what you get, we can do a program with four teachers, and this is what you get, we can get, you know, a program with five. And, um, this is the kind of services that we could provide. I'm recommending tonight that the gifted program be reduced by one teacher. I can explain that right now, we have a total of five, so we would do a reduction of one gifted teacher, and that leaves four. One of the teachers would be the sofa gifted teacher that would completely service the high school and the three positions that were left that would service elementary and middle schools. Central office, we did some restructuring there, we were able to save ninety-one thousand dollars in positions. So you have a subtotal there for district program restructuring. Along with that tonight, we would request that the board release, um, assigned funds in two categories. One category being HVAC, one category being roof repairs. With the nickel tax initiative, we feel like the revenue that is coming into our capital outlay account is definitely enough to be a regular fund as well. And so these assigned account, uh, amounts would, um, it would be fine to release those into the, we have another way to cover that revenue amount money. And then last, in the contingency area, at the end of last year, we closed out in June, on June thirtieth. We ended up with about, for about four million dollars of discretionary money. We came to the board and said, okay, we've reduced all of these areas, and now we have about four million dollars, how would we like to spend it? The board agreed to purchase buses, purchase some technology, different big ticket items. We didn't add any personnel because that would get a rate across, and we didn't want to do that, you all did not want to do that. And, um, we said, well, let's go ahead and put one point six million in contingency in case we need it, kind of thing. And so we're asking to look at using that one point five from that discretionary money as well. Also, uh, was asked to place on, um, the budget sheet tonight. Um, let's just take a look at what it would cost for enrichment teachers, and there are possibilities anyway to bring those back. The curriculum specialist was a topic of discussion that we need to reduce. And, uh, and the amount of what challenge day activities would cost in two thousand sixteen, seventeen, moving forward. At this point, the administration recommendation would be, even though we understand the the importance that the enrichment teachers provided for our schools, with that amount of money, we don't feel like adding those back at this time would be the best use of money. And I also say, uh, with the new accountability and our new assessment coming up, we should wait a few years to see if our, as our budget grows and becomes more stable, what other options would we have to be able to enhance parts and amenities in our elementary schools. And so I'll just kind of stop there, members of the board, let you all discuss and ask questions. This is our first work session, this is our proposal that we're putting on the table.
I have a question about this, it's figured something. The challenge day, it's listed at twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-nine, and we were requested, obviously, twenty-five thousand at the recent meeting. Is that the standard line mark?
Twelve thousand was the amount I got from Jamie, that was a breakdown of the expenses that we spent last year.
Okay, I went right out there, twenty-five, so the first year, it was a total of twelve thousand.
Twelve thousand six hundred and seventy-five.
Right. I had twenty-five was what we would spend, we did two years in a row.
And we had also asked for them to apply for assistance.
Yes, because. I'll go ahead and speak to the things at the bottom. Actually, I had asked for all three of those things, I don't know about the other board members, since we talked to Stanley at a different time than I did. And the reason that I asked for a big round of those is because, especially with the enrichment teachers, I want us to keep that always at our forefront in our thinking because I'm thinking back to our council, the councils meeting in the fall. We heard from nearly everyone, if not everyone, of our councils, that that was one of the things that they wanted to see replaced. That was the, the piece when we asked, you know, what is it that's giving you a heartburn, and the budget cuts, et cetera, et cetera. I believe almost every single one of the councils put that as a top priority. And as a board, when we did our summary, I remember us saying, we heard you loud and clear. So I want to honor that request from our SBN councils because I think a teacher and parent and council voice is so critical to hear what's actually, um, needed at the school level. Sometimes, you know, when we get far removed, we don't actually, you know, see that they're working at it. So I wanted to see that figure. I would agree, that's a tough figure to come up with this year. But I would advocate that we continue to look at that each year, if that is still a high priority in the law when we have our council, the councils meetings. It could be that after a year of doing things differently, our schools have learned to absorb that work. Uh, and that's great, if they have, but I think it really, it really hit our teachers especially hard, classroom teachers. When we did, uh, have to cut those staffing positions because it cut not only, uh, the curriculum and the delivery for the kids, but it also cut the planning time of our teachers, which is critical if you're going to do teamwork in analyzing data. So that was why I asked that to be put on. I agree that wouldn't stand as a tough number to find, uh, because we have, we have eliminated so many things in the last couple of years. But coming up, I think we always need to keep that at the forefront, if our council or councils think that's important. And then I asked to look at the curriculum specialist because that's something that comes up a lot at the school level. I hear from teachers at very places, you know, maybe we don't need those people anymore, maybe we don't need as many. I see their value, I do always want to look at, uh, equity across the district. And if Cairo has one, and the high school has one, some teachers are getting the short end. So, um, you know, do you take away from somebody, or do you give more to another? Uh, I would advocate, when money is fair, we give more to schools that have a larger teacher population. But while we're looking for money, that's a small amount, but I did want to see that figure. Uh, because I do think our teachers have different needs at different schools. There are schools that have higher, uh, access populations, and those teachers may need more support than some of our other, uh, schools that are already at distinguished and, and moving on. So I just think that's something we always need to be looking at. Again, not in any way to shed a negative light on the curriculum specialists and the work they do. But I also think we should continue to think about the focus, the focus of their work may be totally different than it was when those positions were initiated. So maybe we need to think of the name change there, maybe a lot more than just align curriculum. So, uh, you know, to the general public, the curriculum specialist, maybe they're doing a lot more than what that indicates. And the challenge day, I, I just had, I was curious about what the structure was for, uh, making sure that teachers that are new to the district understand that process, that as we go forward on year two and year three and year four, we're not recreating the wheel every year. For instance, with PIVS, with our school disciplinary, uh, programs, you don't really have the same training every single year. After a while, maybe you need to have somebody come in and do a reach week and, and kind of hitch back to where you need to go. But I just questioned whether we needed to have that every single year, or if there was a way that possibly in year two and in year four and then in year six, or, or however you wanted to do that, it could be, uh, the leadership locally actually putting that on. Or a combination of those, so. Those were my questions, and then one other thing, and then, and other than that, I'm, I'm fine with all of the things that they could describe. The preschool program is another one that worries me, and, and I'm glad Miss Stanley brought up about how lean we are there. You know, I know we took away some of the, uh, assistance in that preschool, uh, level. And when you think about, uh, classroom of students that many of them have had hyperchanges, you know, after a while, the, the fewer you have, you're doing more management work and less learning and leading. So, once again, just like our enrichment teachers, I think we need to consistently keep those things at the top of our list when learning is not quite so tight.
Now, we had about this earlier and so we didn't want to say this tonight. The only thing that I'll say is that it does seem like we're cutting quite a bit because we are cutting quite a bit on the special ed program. Just want to make sure that we're doing this.
No, I feel right now, we sat down and looked at the numbers and we made some moves across the district and I will continue to do that for the, you know, the rest of this month until school is out. And then we will sit down, I was just talking to Becky actually, how we're going to sit down, kid by kid, where are they going, what are we doing with them, can we do it? If I feel that we can't do it, Stanley will be the very first person I go to say. She's pretty sure of that, right?
I really have no problem with this. I want a lot of special ed specialized to come up with, you know, and take, take a hit and try to make this work. Actually, everybody involved is, is proud of his plan, is good. I would just voice as far as challenge day goes, it is important, it is pricey, and I want to say again, I'm glad for us to look at and explore. I think that is an untapped potential that we need to start looking at across the boards in any, any area that we can, seek some help with community businesses, grants, whatever. Other than that, nothing else I have.
I'll just start with reuniting on the challenge day. I, I kind of want to do a blend of what you said and what Dr. Sugg said. Because my impression of the challenge day last year was that they were to come in and it was going to be a training, training, that this year they were to be, they would be able to continue the training. We weren't going to stop it, it was going to continue. And when they came back and asked us to do the whole program again, that's when we asked them to come up with some community funds, we didn't know that we should pay for twice to do that. And I still feel that way. I would be okay if they would come up with some community funds to pay for the majority of that. I don't have a problem with kicking in a little bit, but the other thing is then, that's the last time we're going to do it in two, four years from now. The training, the training thing is to go on for the next three years. If we need to have, during the challenge day, even back in four years from now, if we tweak it or reassess this and say, we can hitch back on the right track again, we can do it every four years. But if we do it every year, we're even going to do it every 10 years, I think that's too long. But if we do it in four years, we should be able to keep this program going ourselves. So I'm just ready to commit the 12,000 dollars for it, but if the community people are good recording that, we would be able to kick in for a long time. The understanding that this is the last time we're doing it in four years from now. Does that make sense?
Is there an amount per food?
1,500 dollars.
Is this something we schedule in the summer in the Charlotte new summer feeding program? That would be 1,900 dollars a week.
See, there's a possibility right there.
I think, I have to back a little bit, I think both of the summer days.
That's what I was going to say too, is because the dates are creeping upon us, we've got a week to do it. So it's not something to be, just say, hey, we can do this and we're not taking action. If we want a challenge day and we're going to have to do this, we might as well do it.
We either do that or propose it to be moved.
By school starts.
Actually, for school starts or by after school starts.
And that was an suggestion that you all gave last time, that way we, we need to time period.
Right. And ideally, I think, in the best case scenario, it would be right at the beginning of the school year kickoff, so then build that momentum. That would be ideal, but I don't know what day. Jamie, Nancy have worked on that, what dates are available?
That would also give you time, we can be in hindsight of the road, we wouldn't have to say, get your day right now, it's still going to be a couple, two to three months to get your money here.
I was going with the dates definitely being closer to starting, or like that, we go, you know, like I don't know what day to start on, if there were a couple days prior to that starting date. I just think you would get many more benefits. Then, it's on June 1st, it's still starting like August, but.
So there's some things that we still need the challenge day people and Jamie to come back with us, give some of the numbers, give some suggestions. But to bring it right now, I'm not hearing that you all want to do that, you want to let us know, is that correct? Not wanting to put it hard, so I just want to talk to you. My other comment about the enrichment teachers and the curriculum specialists, and yes, we did hear that at council councils and hear that all the time. My question and my, my belief is that, that 171,000 dollars, if we're to give, instead of saying, okay, we're going to give you back the enrichment teachers, if we're going to give that back, I would prefer to give that back to the schools and sales and principals and say, because they're given a budget now and they have to decide how they're going to fit that budget, how they're going to, they're going to hire two English teachers, they're going to hire four math teachers, that's the principal's job to determine that, not, I don't want to have to tell them they have to hire a enrichment teacher if they don't really need that as bad as they need another specialty teacher. So my theory would be if we gave that money back to them, it would be money back to them if they decide if they want the curriculum specialists changed, if they want a enrichment teacher, but that would be money that they would determine what to do with that, not as something that you have to hire a enrichment teacher. Does that make sense? Sorry? Well, while you were talking, I did some calculations. If the difference between the discretionary contingency codes 1.654 and 86 that we placed last year and the 1.529 that you are asking to use, the difference left over is 125,523. That would pay for five teachers, or pay for seven. You can use the rest of your contingency, the rest of your discretionary contingency and put that back into, we only pay for five teachers.
That's the retiring, that's the retiring, and you're not supposed to use those contingencies for.
That's correct. So you may not have that next year, so you have the enrichment teachers for a year, you wouldn't have that next, next year. Where should we go with the funding for these? Is there any other funds that could be used partially somewhere?
What Tracy's saying as far as we use contingency money, that's a people, that's a rate right across and that's a little scary in some ways.
I was just preparing to do all this here, it's like back and that's.
Oh, right. And people, folks sitting out there, they have taken that on and found a small amount of, yes, some planning time for them and divvied out the content, their evil in their buildings and then a rage on business.
We heard like, well, Chrissy, we're looking at houses in the new picture affecting the teachers. Is it easier, I know it was bad in August, that's, you just, all you can see is losing that planning time, but now that, that it has kind of been divvied out, is it more doable? That's the word, thank you.
I mean, of course, in a, in a perfect world, we would love to have enrichment teachers back, but not at the expense of other things that we have now, would be, you know, curriculum specialists. I, I would venture to say that every principal, probably every site based committee that was really talking to talk about enrichment, if we said, we'll give those to you back, but we'll, we're going to cut in another area, they would not support that because we have had a whole year to, to get used to not having those enrichment teachers. And it's not at the expense of any other instructional time, we've found ways to infuse it into other constant areas. So I, I think that, that if it's going to be a recurring cost, then it would be a year to year thing. I, I mean, that's not just my personal part, I would rather continue the way we have it and we've got those DLC times built into our schedule, schedule and nothing has, nothing has fallen in our school as a result of losing the enrichment teachers. It's made us readjust things, but I think that it's going well. We're good at readjusting, but our curriculum specialists, I know that we kind of adopted that, but they are crucial to the success of everything we talked about.
Maybe it's something different than, than just curriculum because they do so much more that is not, and maybe it was, you know, years ago when we did this, maybe it was more curriculum aligned.
Yeah, oh, I can vouch to that because I was a curriculum specialist and my, my position as a curriculum specialist is totally different than the things that, well, I mean, some of it is the same, but it is, it is much different than it was.
Lots more things.
Well, yeah, lots of different positions have, you know, the principal is a much more instructional leader and not as much of a manager, but it takes, it takes an army and I applaud Sally for talking about the different needs of schools and because my needs are totally different, even though I only have, you know, just close to 400 kids, my needs are totally different than Deb's or Ben's or, or anybody, so.
And that's the reason why I hesitate, telling you that we're, we're going to give you back the position and you have to use it for that because you have, you have a voice in the opposition, you have a title, so you know your needs better than we do in many schools, but we do. So I hate to say, yes, we're giving you back seven enrichments, you can, well, you need that money for something else. You'd rather determine that yourselves instead of us. That's why I was hoping that.
Well, I appreciate Sally having us put that on there when you first shared it, I was like, oh no, no, no. But as you put, as you put that amount on there, really it wasn't that much, brought it up, put that amount on there. Now, this is just an estimation that if we did an assessment, then accountability rolls out in a few years, arts amenities is important to our kids, our variety of grades. We have four music teachers in the elementary, we could add four full time music teachers and probably 200,000 dollars. Imagine somebody there all day, all the time. A quality certified in the arts.
We should be ready by the enrichment teachers, we could use it in a couple of years to.
Think as possible. If we're able to add that type of cost back. It's just a thought, it's just we love the amount.
I say we're going to create a summer program, school programs program at the high school. I know whether we need a theater program this year at our elementary school, it would be nice if we could do it, but if we can start working towards that in the next couple of years, if we heard that across the state, if we were, if the officials heard that across the state over and over again, I don't think theater is, I guess, expected to happen just that quick. But if we can start working on that in the next couple of years, if we say that ready this year, didn't really have a budget this year, say for a couple of years, we might be able to, we're ready to start a summer program, I would love to work the way I, I just.
I agree with everything that you said here and I just think that conversation is so important because I always want to honor, like I said, what the councils are asking for, we heard that so loud and clear, so I think we'd be missing, we didn't at least give it the time we have tonight. And I really feel like we've gotten some feedback from some of the principals and one thing I just continue to say over and over again is equity, and I've heard this from Dr. Ekman a long time ago, equity is not giving everybody the same thing, it's giving everybody what he or she needs. And so once again, some schools, they're small and less adverse population, they need something totally different than a high school or one of the middle schools. And two, those schools may not be exactly the same thing because of their changes in leadership, et cetera. So we just need to continually look at what the needs are for each individual school. And then I've got one last point too, and then I'm finished, but I had talked with Stanley about this, when we look at like special ed program, for instance, that's a lot of teachers that, and program assistants that we're looking at cutting. When school starts and we see we absolutely have to have one of those back, or even in the regular staffing formula, in most districts, that's a position, or many districts, I won't say most, but in some districts, that comes to the board and the board acts on that as a, as a, and I, that letting it through. So I, I don't really care that we do it that way, but I do think that needs to come back to the board because if we have looked and you've cut 9.5 and 10 program assistants, but then you add five back in the fall, we're not ever aware of it, then we're not really doing our due diligence. So I would just request, and I've talked with Stanley about this, either putting that somehow as an FYI on the agenda or that maybe you look it up and maybe it does, we can be in a position to create a classroom or to create a position that we've already done with us. So just so we're aware of, that we're hard at that to meet the needs that we have in the current school year. And we'll get that because then that's going to be a major change in the budget that we already started talking about. So like you said, if it would be more targeted, like if Maggie, she worked so hard about that, and I went by a long sentence, she would have had that back to make.
The kids would. It depends on the kids that show up. She's, she's looking at the kids we have right now, you may have kids at all, but.
I just got every fifth grader and every eighth grader's scheduled today to look at individually, y'all, that's what we're going to do. And like Sally said, they might not show up next year, they might go someplace else, we don't know, but we will sit.
Question about the CTE program?
Sure.
You said that we didn't want to stop pathways, that we hadn't even started, and I totally agree with that and support that idea. Those paths that we didn't want as many students are involved with, will they be offered those paths to the incoming freshman or once those students, will they go away?
Correct, because we will offer the first class or second class and the third class with the senior submission.
Yes.
Now, there's other parts of that pathway that they can do, it's just particular classes.
Correct, because if. Also, the restructuring program of Central Academy, and that's a big dollar amount, we all talked about that before, could we see some detailed information about how you all plan to restrict, this is great, the dollar revenue, but how you all plan to do that in the next cycle of months, as our regular board meeting, we're working session, just for our information.
We'll probably not present, I hope to you all, so that you understand the whole programming, it helps, but we can get decisions about kids and if we're best to put it.
Whereas, because we worked there this last year, it's a big piece of our mind, we need to understand how to. Other than that, I hope we're, the rest of, the rest of the pleasure, I think that's all for now. Do you guys have any more suggestions?
I think maybe we need to let, let her know that, that there's just no way we can make that gym first, second, third day for the challenge day so that, that she can be taken on at a later day. If, you know, I just don't think it's really happening.
By chance, she's raised all the funds.
Well, right, right.
I think Sammy, I think your little calculation, I think 75%, which means she can raise, we take around the 19%. She have raised.
She had her as close to eight thousand dollars. The difference would be the food, plus the twenty...
Next Monday, she would have to... Share with her the eight thousand dollars that we had. We did not give you the story that they were ready to improve that.
No, I didn't think they'd be all ready to do that. Just right now, there is...
And we, and we have shared with her what our first plan is in the summer session. We're going to be receiving, I understand, saying it's, it's not making decisions all the time. It's having a session. Okay, I want more emotional pressure, Miss Lafferty.
Come on.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. Right there, second. Thank you, Congresswoman Seid. All the members say aye?
Let's start it.